If everybody could take their seats, I'm calling the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Nice to see everybody here today and the Natchog crew up there. Good to see you all. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll start with approval of the minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the November 6th meeting minutes. Motion made by Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Alicia. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising their hand. Okay, motion carries. Is there anybody who has signed up to speak under public comment today? Nobody? Anybody who didn't sign up to speak under public comment want to speak? Okay, so we'll move on to Board Chair's report. I don't really have anything in particular to report. I just, you know, as we move through the agenda today, I want to make sure the board had a chance to look at the calendar for 2025 because we'll be potentially taking action on that. And we did rejigger the schedules for particularly the committee meetings. So I want to make sure it reflects what everybody thinks they were going to be, the dates and how we were going to have those meetings. So I guess we'll just move on then to the Superintendent's report. And Tracy, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to move my report around a little bit. And I'm going to start with letter E. Natchog School receives School of Distinction designation from the Connecticut State Department of Ed. Yes, we can forward to that, to that slide. There it is. Okay, each year, the Connecticut State Department of Education issues a list of schools that score within the top 10% of achievement and/or growth. These schools are identified as Schools of Distinction. Natchog Elementary School was named a 2324 School of Distinction for High Growth in English Language Arts for our High Need Students. Congratulations, Natchog School. And because there are so many of you here, I don't know how you want to handle this, but we do have a plaque to provide to the school and come up and get a quick picture. I don't know what's going on with my microphone.
Do you want to trade mics?
Oh, my gosh. What are you doing?
Thank you, sir, to be proud and recognized.
You got that little shirt on?
We're very proud of you all. Thank you very much for all your work. And I heard before the meeting started that you have a special wall in the school on which you are displaying these distinctions and awards, which are well deserved. Thank you very much.
The wall is filling up fast. I love it. Keep it going. All right, so now we'll go back to the beginning of my report. And that is if we can go back a few slides to the pictures from Wyndham Middle School. I don't know who's working in the back.
Also, Natchog folks, you don't have to stay if you don't want to. You're welcome to stay for as much of the meeting or all of the meeting if you'd like, but we won't be offended if people need to get home and do things. So.
Okay, so this is just some pictures from Wyndham Middle School's celebration of Veterans Day. They actually, the students actually wrote to veterans letters of appreciation. And one recipient actually made a special trip to Wyndham Middle School to bring a token of appreciation to a student who had, they had received a card from. So we're proud of our students at the middle school for honoring our vets and just wanted to celebrate them tonight. As has been the case for about two years now, you will find information in your, in your packet related to our policy updates. There's a list of policies that are up tonight for repeal. And we've given you with each policy, the reason why we're suggesting a repeal. There's also a policy tonight up for repeal and replacement. All the details are in your packet for you to reference when we get to that part of the agenda. Wyndham High School's football team and particular players on the football team were celebrated recently. There's a video that the board members can watch. We provided you with the link that talks about sort of the heart of the football team, the heart of our students, and we're really proud of them. So we wanted to share that with the board, that they are getting highlighted in other places for their compassion and respect and just the way they carry themselves on the football field. So always a good lesson when it comes to how other people recognizing how wonderful our students are. District Equity Walkthroughs. As part of the next phase of our racial equity leadership development, the work that we've been doing with Courageous Conversations, six Wyndham schools are participating in Equity Walks or Walkthroughs focused on racial equity. In preparation for the Equity Walks, all of our leadership in racial equity development or the LEEDs team participated in these trainings. And we just recently, on November 1st, held this training. We actually, just last week, had the first Equity Walkthroughs in two of our schools. We are, we continue as a district to be invested in this partnership with Courageous Conversations and this, and this work around ensuring equity and that we live up to our strategic priority, which is that diversity is strength. And these are the walkthroughs that the board members have been invited on. So if you, I know there's, it mentions that the next set of Equity Walkthroughs are taking place in February and then in May. Board members, mark your calendars because you are welcome to attend. Next up is just to let the board know that we had our first district monitoring meeting with Dr. Melissa Jenkins, who is the Chief Turnaround Officer from the Connecticut State Department of Ed, and Ms. Nicole Jones, who is an Associate Education Consultant from the Turnaround Office. Mr. Weathers actually led us through the presentation in that monitoring meeting. We received some really positive feedback about the progress the district is making. And they are going to be using our district for future resources around dual language, as you might expect. And they also were very interested in the work that we're doing with closing elementary, an elementary school and considering the consolidation process based on enrollment. They said that we could potentially be a resource to other districts because we are sort of living through this process already. At that meeting, we were actually given strong feedback or positive feedback that we included Rita Parsiac, our Finance Director, because of just how complicated the grants that come out of that office are. I guess other places have been asked to invite their Finance Director. We actually had her come. It was the first time the Finance Director spent the time in the meeting with us. So not only was Rita there, so was Erin Coleman, our Director of People's Services, and Beth Brunet, our Director of Equity and Multilingual Education. And then there's some updates from the EME Department. On Thursday, November 7th, Equity and Multicultural Education Department Supervisors Amy Finsmith and Sherri Poy attended the Advancing Multilingual Education Summit, co-sponsored by the Connecticut State Department of Education and the Connecticut Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, or CALIS. The keynote speaker was Dr. Hector Montenegro. And the conference had numerous breakout sessions. Amy Finsmith presented the cornerstones of dual language education and received a shout out from a participant during the wrap up at the end of the day for providing participants with information about how to effectively launch a dual language education program. So congratulations to Amy and that department, Sherri as well. We appreciate their participation. On Tuesday, October 29th, again, the EME Department leaders Beth Brunet and Amy Finsmith were interviewed by the Migration Policies Institute, Marjorie McHugh and Julie Sugarman. The Migration Policy Institute, or MPI, is working with the Connecticut Project to conduct an analysis of the barriers and opportunities that shape immigrant integration and economic mobility in the state of Connecticut. The Migrant Policy Institute and Connecticut Project are working across sectors, housing, healthcare, and employment, and are also interested in what investments can be made in the K-12 system to help schools support positive outcomes and upward economic mobility for immigrant families. Our leaders were interviewed about dual language education and English learner education and supports in Wyndham, and the challenges and opportunities in Wyndham and in Connecticut. The interview was about an hour long and is the final series of interviews being conducted for the study that is expected to be released in the new year. So we hope to have access to that information once it is formally released so we can share it throughout the district. And that is all I have tonight for my Superintendent's report.
Are there any questions for Dr. Youngberg or any comments? I just want to say that part of what was reflected in your report is the, the, the work that our district does to celebrate its diversity, multicultural, multilingual background. And my daughter, who's an English language learner teacher, was at that conference that Amy Finsmith presented at and, and said that it made her proud to be a graduate of Wyndham Public Schools, to be at the, that conference. And that the keynote speaker was really excellent. And she was happy to see our, our staff recognized there.
That's great. That's awesome feedback for us.
Also, do you have any idea when the Migration Policy Institute will be doing, I mean, coming up with its report? Okay, they said soon, okay. It might be particularly interest, of interest, given what's happening in the climate, the political climate these days and the impact that it may have on people who live in our town. So I'll be very, I'd really like to see that report when it, as a board member, I'd like to see that report.
Yes, we will absolutely make sure it gets shared.
Yep, thank you. That's all I had. I'm sorry to hog the mic, but does anybody else have anything they want to say? No? Okay. Thank you very much. And we're going to move on to committee reports then. And Policy Committee is always busy and I'll hand it over to you, Katina.
As usual, thank you to the staff for putting our agendas together. And Brandon, you're going to need to help me tonight with my voice. We decided that next, for next year, we're going to meet on the second Tuesday, Monday, second Monday of the month at 5:30 to make it more convenient for all the members of the committee to attend. And tonight, you have for your decision making to repeal quite a few policies that are outdated and no longer required. And one to repeal and replace with, yes, by what was recommended to us by our lawyers. That's it. Brandon, you have anything else to add?
That summed it up beautifully.
Thank you.
Any questions for Katina? No, thank you. Now we're on to Finance and Audit Committee. Mark?
We met just prior to the meeting tonight. We are not going to take any action on our transfers. There was a few typos and some other edits that need to be, questions that need to be asked. So we just removed that. We're not going to ask for approval. That'll be done the next meeting. We reviewed the year-to-date budget and had a discussion about the ECS shortfall and start setting the strategy or the presentation for the Board of Finance so that they can hopefully assist us with that, that shortfall. I believe was the highlights.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark? Okay, thank you. Now we're on to discussion items. The first item is regarding the Search Committee for Wyndham's next superintendent. And we have a resolution that we can take action on tonight to appoint the full Board of Ed as the Personnel Search Committee. And this was recommended by our attorney based on the way the state statute and other rules work regarding who has ultimate authority, court, the only authority actually to vote on and make the final selection on next superintendent. I want to convey to members of the public who are following this and watching this that once the Personnel Search Committee is created, and hopefully action will be taken on that tonight, then the board can go into discussion and review the RFPs that we will be receiving from a potential, from potential consulting firms to choose a, a search, a contractor really, to help us with the search process. We also then can begin full discussions about how we're going to engage the different stakeholders in the community in the process through public forums, through advisory conversations, through surveys, through things of that sort. So I want to reassure everybody that even though we will be taking action tonight to appoint the full Board as the Personnel Search Committee, that does not mean the process will be exclusive or exclusionary in any way of the community as a, as a full community. We, we fully intend to stand by what we said at our last meeting and talked about at our retreat, that we want to make sure we engage the community and the stakeholders in the process. But we don't want to set up any false expectations that, that anybody but the board in the final analysis makes the final decision on who the superintendent, the next superintendent will be. We anticipate that this will be a process that we can begin after the first of the year. And so that we can hopefully get somebody in before the end of this school year but at least by the end of the school year. But it depends on who the candidates are that come forward and, you know, how we, we want to make sure that we don't take any shortcuts, that we go through a full and vibrant and open process. Any votes that get taken on decisions that this committee makes have to be made in public. So I want to reassure folks that that's the way in which we will be conducting ourselves. We do have a resolution to appoint, to establish this Personnel Search Committee. And we just want to get it going so that we can be ready to launch the process once we have a contractor in place. I just wanted to let-
Tracy, you want to say anything? Thank you. Just let, let the public know that the RFP is actually on the district's websites. On the very first page, it pops up as soon as you open the homepage. It's the same RFP that was in last Board Meeting's minutes. And it specifically spells out the stakeholder engagement being an important piece of the process. And it has the timeline exactly that you're referring to. So it's all there in the document that anyone can access.
So is there anybody who wants to make any comments, have any questions about that at this point on the board? I know that several people have mentioned that the, they've seen what the town has been doing and the search for a new town manager with the community forum that they had recently at the Community Center on a Saturday that allowed various members of the public to participate in a pretty vibrant way. They've also done surveys that people could send out. The board can also, you know, do like a listening tour and hear from people. There are various ways we can get input throughout the process. Anything else? Okay, so we'll move on to proposed Board meeting dates for 2025. Sort of this is part and parcel of the committee meeting dates. And for members of the public who are watching this, we are required by law to set our schedule for 2025 before, some date in December, I think it is. So we have to set the schedule now for 2025. And then, once we set that schedule, any deviation from it requires the meetings to be special meetings rather than regular meetings. And for people who follow this stuff, you know that if it's a special board meeting, you can't make any adjustments to the agenda and things of that sort. But anybody have any comments or concerns or questions about the proposed dates that are in our packet? Now would be a good time to bring them up. Mary?
Is this just for the full Board or, or the committee? I had to comment on the committee ones.
Start with the full Board. Does anybody have any comments or questions about the full Board schedule? No? Okay, Mary, go ahead on the committees.
No, I just noticed that for Finance and Audit, it says meets at 6:00 PM virtual, not virtual and in person. And we have sort of been meeting in person as well as virtually.
That's, we need to fix that.
Right, actually, if you look, it's Personnel is virtual, not in person. The Finance and Audit was virtual, not in person. The Policy is virtual. And the School Planning was virtual. So I don't know if that's a typo or did we, are we switching from in person?
Generally, the committee meetings have been virtual, correct?
But we, but we do normally have Finance-
Finance in person.
Yeah, we should, yeah.
And virtual. We have to offer them virtual. The question is, do we want to have it in person and virtual? We should talk about that, people should.
I would intend for the Finance and Audit to be in person and virtual. So that's fine with, I would accept that correction.
Which one, Mark? Okay, we'll make that in person and virtual.
And actually, curriculum has mainly been virtual only, so.
So do you want us to take off the in-person?
Yep, okay. Curriculum will be virtual. Personnel will remain virtual. And when we say virtual, these are open Zoom meetings. So members of the public can participate via Zoom. It just means you don't have to come in person. So Ad Hoc Elementary School Consolidation and Construction Planning Committee will be in person and virtual, correct? The consultants that we're working with often like to come in person. So we want to offer both those options. Finance and Audit will be in person and virtual. Policy Committee remain virtual. And School Planning and Design remain virtual. Okay, I want to remind members too that we changed up membership on some of these committees. So people should make sure that they put these dates in their calendars because as we were reminded by our attorney, we have to have a quorum of committee members in order to have these meetings, so. Okay, any further discussion on the proposed meeting dates for 2025? Mary, go ahead. meeting dates for 2025? Mary, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I just noticed that the Ad-Hoc Elementary School is overlaps, or it doesn't overlap, but on, you know, the times there is a curriculum committee meeting at 5:30, that Ad-Hoc Elementary Consolidation Committee is at 6:15. That's kind of cutting it close if we wanted to go to both, or it's that there are some people who are on curriculum and Ad-Hoc Elementary.
So let's see where the... Yes, because you're going to every other month for curriculum, correct, Mary? So do we want to, are you suggesting that maybe we make these Ad-Hoc meetings 6:30 rather than 6:15? Yeah, but, but some people are on both. Katina?
Yes, I am on both, and it's fine with me if it says like that because I can bring my computer here ahead of time, participate then in the curriculum, don't know about other members of the team.
Well, I just think 45 minutes is rather minimal, you know, so.
If you're meeting.
Especially if I'm meeting every other.
She's meeting every other month. She's saying 45 minutes may not be enough time. So what do you think, Mark, about your committee moving their time start to 6:30 rather than 6:15?
I don't know, that's conflicting with the curriculum. I have no problem with that. Can we do a 6 on the other months? 6:30 on the months that she's meeting and 6 o'clock?
Okay.
On the months that they're not meeting.
Is that okay with members of that committee? To do alternating meeting times, 6, and then 6:30 on the months when it is the same month as curriculum? It is an Ad-Hoc Committee, so it will, you know, not be... Okay. So Janet, it would need to be reflected, then, that on the months that are the same as curriculum, the meeting would start at 6:30, and the alternate months, it would be at 6 o'clock. Is that okay with folks? Any other comments? We did not take into account... Okay, I see what's happening here. Okay. No, I answered my own question when I looked at the calendar a little more closely. Anything else for discussion? And I'll take responsibility for following up with the two Board members who had conflicts tonight and couldn't be here to make sure that they really look at this calendar. And we're going to be taking action on this at our next meeting in December? Because I don't see it on the agenda for tonight. Is that okay? Do we meet the deadline? Because we can add it tonight if we need to. So, well, Janet will check the deadline and let us know before we get to action items then, okay? Thanks, folks, and thanks Janet and Holly and Central Office staff and Board members for working on this. The next topic of discussion is Appointment of Interim Assistant Superintendents. And as we did last month when we took action on assistant, I mean, an interim superintendent, appointing Neil as the interim superintendent. And by the way, there was a nice article about Neil in today's Willmanic Chronicle front page. We also had recommendations from Tracy to appoint assistant, interim assistant superintendents for the purposes of keeping the ship moving forward on course during this interim process, during the search process, until we can get a new superintendent into place. And we talked about making that two positions because basically, you have three people who will be doing the job of four, jobs of four people. And so some of the responsibilities needed to be parsed out a little bit differently to make sure everything gets covered. And Tracy, I'm going to hand it over to you to sort of expand on that.
Sure. I'm going to expand a little bit, and then I'm going to hand it to the interim superintendent. It was exactly what you're saying. My goal and the plan that I, the recommendations I made, was to make sure that we could continue the district in its forward trajectory, thinking about the fact that for what was once four people would be three people doing the work. And I desperately wanted to make sure that we didn't interrupt the leadership and the operations of our school buildings because essentially, districts can't meet their goals if schools aren't operating efficiently. So I desperately wanted to make sure that we kept our schools supported and Central Office and the district-wide work was divvied up between the three people. So I looked at, considered an interim assistant superintendent on the operations side and an interim assistant superintendent on the teaching and learning side. And we took all of the responsibilities that Neil and myself and other Central Office people share and spread them out and gave some recommendations. So I'm going to call Neil up to the podium to take it from here, but that's essentially how I came up with the recommendation or why I came up with the recommendations I did.
Good evening. So what I'm going to do is, I know you have both bios of the two candidates in your packets. I'm going to just go through them very quickly, and then I'll elaborate on what Dr. Youngberg said. So Beth Bernay, who is here, our current Director of Equity and Multilingual Education. As you can read from her bio, it speaks to her. Prior to joining public schools, she was at English as a foreign language teacher abroad, all over the globe. She has been working in U.S. Public Schools for 22 years. She started off in Norwich, Connecticut, as a new arrivals ESOL teacher. She then went on to become the district's first bilingual and ESOL coordinator and did a lot of the roles, grants, delivered numerous professional learning initiatives, created district-wide interpretation and translation services and a warehouse of more than 400 written translations in three different languages. In 2008, Ms. Bernay accepted a position as an education consultant with CERC, the State Education Resource Center, where she delivered statewide and district professional development and technical assistance related to education of English learners, racial equity, cultural competence, differentiated instruction, SRBI, that was the term back in the day, now called MTSS, and co-teaching. In the beginning of the 12,011-12 school year, Beth came to Wyndham as the Director of ESOL Bilingual Education and World Languages, where she served the district for the next three school years. During that time, she ensured compliance with Federal Title III and state bilingual education law, expanded the Companeros program and department staffing, and delivered professional development throughout the district. In 2014, she worked with Wyndham students at the PATH Academy. She took, and during that time, she worked as an ESOL teacher and then became an educational consultant with LEARN, one of the six Connecticut RESCs in the district. There, she provided district and regional professional development and technical assistance to the 27 LEARN region school districts, as well as coordinated Yale Grants for the LEARN Magnet Schools and LEARN Region Title III Consortium of 19 districts. She ran the LEARN and UConn Title III Consortium councils and developed statewide PD sessions and online modules related to education of English learners. In the summer of 2021, at the encouragement of Wyndham staff, Ms. Bernay returned to the Wyndham family as the Director of Equity and Multilingual Education. She has been serving in this role since. She holds several content area certifications in PK to 12 TSAL, secondary science and secondary history, as well as an O92 in administration, and she is currently enrolled in an O93 certification program. She holds a bachelor's in English and French and a master's in Applied Linguistics, TSAL, as well as school and coursework beyond these degrees. She has attended programs and courses at nine universities and insists on taking positions in which she feels that she could serve district teachers and students best. In all of Beth's schooling and professional service, she has been dedicated to learning, teaching, and the building of programs that better serve multilingual learners in Connecticut schools. Beth grew up very close to Wyndham, Willamantic, and the education of Wyndham students, and the success of its language programs are something that she takes pride in, both professionally and personally. So, and I will talk a little bit more about Beth in a second. I'm going to go to the next candidate, which is Mr. Albie Harris, who is our Executive Director of Operations and Strategic Initiatives. Mr. Albie Harris was recently appointed the Executive Director of Operations and Strategic Initiatives, supervising food services, IT facilities, before and after-school programming, summer school, school construction projects, and a variety of operations initiatives. Mr. Albie Harris has been an administrator for Wyndham Public Schools for the past 14 years and an educator for over 25 years. In the district, Albie has held the roles of High School Principal, Middle School Administrator, Executive Director for Administration and Operations, and most recently, Director of Secondary Education. Albie holds an O93 certification from UConn's Executive Leadership Program, as well as an O92 certificate he also completed at UConn. Throughout his tenure at WPS, he has been relied on as a utility player supporting curriculum instruction, school improvement initiatives, grant writing, transportation, safety and security, and school renovation initiatives. Albie's support with Wyndham High School has enabled his school-based leadership team to more effectively manage the day-to-day operations of the building. In fact, some of his suggestions for phasing the project resulted in notable improvements to the time spent in the construction phase. Albie always has a smile on his face and wants to celebrate our students, schools, and departments. We truly appreciate his positivity. During his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family and his new Rottweiler, who's probably not even so much a puppy anymore, Moka. So I just wanted to speak to both of them. As you can hear from their vast amount of experiences on the teaching and learning side, Beth has served as the Director of Equity and Multilingual Education for which represents over 80 staff, and the department serves about close to, if not over, 1,000 students in the district. So I'm really appreciative to have her take over some of the roles that I do in the assistant superintendent role while I learn and take over some of the roles in the interim superintendent role. Swinging it over to the other side, we're really fortunate to have Albie, who has been a school leader. And we have a, as Beth is pursuing her O93, we know that Albie has his O93, and he's been a critical player in the renovation project. And I think that is going to be really helpful as we're closing the school, moving fifth grade over. So I think both of them are going to really fit very nicely with Grace, Reed, and myself, and we're going to make a fantastic team of five. So then, when the Board, in their infinite wisdom, pick a great superintendent for us, that we will be handing it over in great shape for them. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Neil. It's not on the agenda for action tonight. So we would be taking action at our next meeting on the 11th, unless the Board wanted to add it to the agenda tonight. But I just want to stress again, this is to keep things moving forward. And then, once a new superintendent is chosen, Neil, Beth, and Albie would all go back to their roles that they're serving in at this point before Tracy leaves. Mark?
I would, I would recommend, or make a motion that we put the appointment of these interim assistants superintendents on the action items tonight.
So you're making a motion to add it? Motion made by Mark, seconded by Brendan. Any further discussion? This is just to add the item to the agenda under action items? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to add this as an action item tonight? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, so we'll add that as an action item I and tonight, under... Yeah, action item I. Thank you.
Lynn?
Yes?
While I'm adding, I would also make a motion to add the approval of the calendar to today's action items. I don't see a reason to postpone it.
You want to do that? I did find out from Janet that we have until December 14th to act on the calendars. You want to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made by Mark, seconded by Katina, to add the Board of Ed schedule for 2025 and the committee's schedule for 2025 to action items on tonight's agenda, and that would be items J and K. Any further discussion? So I can cross up. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, so I can rip up this piece of paper on things to follow up at the next meeting. Okay, thank you. So any further discussion on this before we move on to Board Workshop, Grade 5 Returns to Wyndham Middle School for the 2025-2026 school year? Okay, Tracy?
Save this one off. So I'm going to invite Sly Pereira, our Director of Facilities, and Albie Harris up to the podium. They're going to lead us through information that the Board has requested related to moving the fifth graders back to Wyndham Middle School from both a facilities and an instructional standpoint. So I'll hand it over to the gentlemen and let them walk you through.
Good evening, Board members. Tracy, members of the community, staff, administrators. Sly and I have been working for the last couple of weeks, if not months, looking at the transition of fifth grade coming back to Wyndham Middle School. It is a very big change for our community and really working collaborative to prepare and gather information to go over the process that needs to take place. So, once again, facility and instructional planning, move the fifth grade back to Wyndham Middle School. Okay. So here on the next slide, this information comes from Tracy's presentation in May, talking about the staffing that would be placed at Wyndham Middle School to support the students. From this slide, you can see the layout of the fifth grade wing. It is on the first floor in the back of the school. It's opposite where the sixth grade currently is today. That was the area where W E C C was located while we were finishing the renovations here. And then you can see there are 10 classrooms, both dual-language and unilanguage, indicated by DL and UL. In addition, there is special ed teacher, ESOL teacher, ELA interventionist, math interventionist, Spanish interventionist, social worker. And then on the kind of the right side, you have an IC, instructional coach, administrator, and counselor. So that is a draft of the layout. That is, and then also in addition on the left, there's rooms for two specials classes. So that's based on the information that was presented in May in the staffing list.
Just to remind the community and the Board that we have a link on our website specific to moving the fifth grade back to Wyndham Middle School and closing Wyndham Center School. All of the information that's ever been presented about those topics is under those links on our website.
And just a point for the community. It's actually not in the back of the school, but on the side. Sixth grade is here and fifth grade is here, correct?
Well, the sixth grade is currently in the front of the school, closest to the parking lot in the front. There's a flag hallway that intersects the middle.
Okay, I was, I was walking down the hall.
Yeah, so flag hallway is that hallway in that picture there. And this would be on the side, the two elevators are to the back in the back of the school. Okay, and that's exactly where W E C C was located for a couple of years during the renovation process. All right? So just, just to look at that. If we go to the next slide, please. Wanted to kind of show you the current conditions of where we are right now, today, in that wing with Sly directing custodians, facilities, staff. They have cleared out the whole area. All those rooms on the layout have been cleared in the hallway, but these are the conditions where we are now. There's a lot of work that needs to take place to prepare it for the fifth grade coming in. in, and we want to, once again, make this fifth grade wing, you know, as best as we can make it for these students and families that are coming there. In addition, we have worked extremely hard in our renovation project here to do a tremendous upgrade on this campus for our high school and for our early childhood, which you know you've been to is fantastic. And so, just kind of want to let you know a little bit about where we are.
Is, is your mic on?
Yes, it's on. Can you hear me now?
I think you need to speak closer to it.
Okay.
Because people, if anybody was watching this on Zoom, they might not be able to hear you.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, once again, this is just our current state. I'm going to have Sly talk about some of the work that, um, he's been doing with his crew of, um, facilities.
Good evening, everyone. So, as Albie just said, um, staff, we've been able to clear the whole, uh, area out, and the picture state with the condition that it's in right now. Moving forward, uh, the cost of demolition, uh, in removing the walls that were put up to house W E C C, were just temporary walls that were built around the original structure. So, there's really no cost other than just removing them. The cost to clean and wax the floors, there's no cost in that, as that's regular work that the facilities department is going to be doing every, every summer anyways. The replacement of the cove base is something that we, I strongly feel needs to be done. The cove base, uh, throughout the building could use to get done, but this would be the ideal time to get that area done as it's vacated now, empty. The, oh, sorry. So, the cove base is basically the baseboard around every floor, floor-to-wall junction in every classroom, and it's just the classrooms. There's nothing needed in the corridors.
So, the cost on this slide is the cost that we're talking about then?
Correct.
The $5,292?
Correct. That would be the cost to replace every single classroom with a new cove base. The corridor doesn't need cove base because it's got porcelain tile as cove base. The next would, uh, would be for the administrative offices, um, the addition of air conditioning units. This is, this is a quote that we got from the contractor to add air conditioning units for the administrative offices, which is 39,531.
And I just want to mention too, at Wyndham Middle School, for the sixth grade administrative office, seventh and eighth grade administrative offices, in the past number of years, AC has been put into those spaces, um, because it is extremely hot in the spring, in the fall, and also during the summer. So, this is to be consistent with the work that's already been done there.
So, I was able to get, uh...
We have a question. Go ahead, Katina.
The nursing space, uh, is going to be in that area too with air conditioning, thinking about some of the kids that might need it?
The nursing, uh, space would be the existing nurse that's there. So, we already have a, a nursing area in the middle school. It would just be shared through all the grade levels. Yep.
And Sly and I did a walkthrough of the nurses' area to make sure there are enough spaces available for additional nurses, so that could accommodate the increase of the students.
Moving forward, the, uh, the space, as, as you've seen in the pictures before, uh, in my strong opinion, desperately need to be painted, and again, this is the ideal time to do it while the space is vacated. We're able to get two quotes, um, obviously, there are two very different quotes, so we're going to go with, if possible, AWL would be the way to go. AWL also painted recently the middle school cafeteria, and they did an outstanding job with that, and also the kitchen while they were down there. And came up with that cost, and i- in order for it to be done in-house, it would require my maintenance department to be on overtime, because I can't pull my maintenance department that amount of time to spend there, because every, the rest of the district would suffer for it. And if you pay my maintenance, uh, department overtime, it actually the same or even more money than what the quote from AWL would be. And much AWL can get in there in three to four weeks, tops, and my maintenance department will probably take six to seven or eight weeks in order to do that, because they'd be working three to four hours a day on overtime. The quote from McKinsey is significantly higher. Not sure why, but I imagine that it's, uh, that's the same contractor that did the, uh, high school, and they were probably, uh, reaching for the stars, in my opinion.
Any questions so far on, on what we've presented? And once again, the goal is to go through, repaint the classrooms, hallways, bathrooms, offices, um, and it's in desperate need of that. Okay, if we can go to the next slide, um, one of the questions that was brought up was what, um, furniture is at the middle school? So, you can see from this slide, in 2017, um, about $50,000 was spent for 250 desks and chairs and some other chairs for receptionist areas. Then in 2019, there was another major purchase, uh, 300 student, uh, chairs and desk, um, and then Sly and I also did a walkthrough and looked at the middle school, and, and there is no furniture fifth, fifth grade at the middle school. All the furniture that was original over the years has worn and, and has been disposed of due, due to damage and safety concerns. So, this is the current state of what's in place now. Then the next thing that Sly and I did is we went and we did an audit and went to look at the furniture first at Wyndham Center. Uh, we looked at both, uh, fifth grade classrooms, and then we also looked at some fourth grade classrooms. What you can see from the pictures here is in those classrooms, it's a, it's a combination of desks and tables. The desks are different and at different heights. Um, I would say range probably 20 to 25 years. The chairs, there's probably about eight different types of chairs and styles of different heights and conditions, um, and so it's just a wide range. And as you can see from the table there, they put contact paper on that table to give it a little upgrade. We can go to the next slide, um, then went to Natchog to look at the furniture there in the fifth grade. As you can see on the left slide, uh, there are three desks, all different, um, heights, and then also damaged. You can see they're starting to break and fall apart. Once again, a variety of chairs, then also they have some classes with tables, and as you can see, two people to the table, it's in their materials on it, it's cramped. Well, once again, I, I give a shout out to Natchog because they're doing outstanding things at that school, so great job, Natchog.
And just a reminder, if we do end up moving forward on the elementary consolidation construction project, F F and E is all included in the project. That's how it works, brand-new furniture for all.
Right, and that's the same with our renovation as new here. It's all F F and E, so all of our furniture for the students and staff on this campus is brand-new. Um, and there's a slide in here that we'll look at that shows that. Um, one of the things that Sly wanted to look at too is, is this is what's there, but to move it also has a cost. Sly, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah. So, I reached, I reached out to Myers, and, uh, we did a walkthrough of some of the schools, and we went to look at the, uh, fifth grade, possibly some fourth grade classrooms throughout the district that we could move. Obviously, that comes at a cost, and this is what we ended up with. And even if, even if we have Myers move, what is available to be moved, we will still be very short with the furniture, and still would have to purchase furniture. There isn't enough furniture in the district to consolidate and move the fifth grade into the middle school. But that's the cost represented on the slide.
And as I understand, I mean, even if we did move what we could, um, it would be all a mishmash of different things, and it wouldn't be the same quality and kind of furniture that the rest of the grades in the middle school have.
That is correct.
So, the fifth grade would have, would be like a stepchild with furniture.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. And even though, even though, uh, like you said, a mishmash of furniture, it's such a mishmash that it's different manufacturers of furniture. So, it's not as easy as even just adjusting heights. You can adjust height from one manufacturer to the other and put it at the same height, and they're still different, because that's, that, the way that manufacturer works. So, it'd be virtually impossible to create a nice space with what we have for the fifth graders.
And also, it wouldn't be sufficient. We would still have to purchase, it wouldn't be enough, as you saw from the floor plan of all the classrooms that we have to fill. So, we would be short even doing that. In addition, you can see on the same slide, um, fifth grade materials to Wyndham Middle School, uh, these are all the classes that are moving to the middle school from the four, Wyndham Center, North Wyndham, Natchog School, and Sweeney. Once again, when we look at our fifth grade materials, it's the teacher materials, but we have art materials that would have to come, eureka squared, science materials, so that there's a lot of parts and pieces, um, when we do make that, that move, and that would take place in the summer, as we know, because they're teaching. So, that, that's another mi- major undertaking that we have to consider.
Yeah, and, and again, with, with the move, um, that's also something that my facilities department would, they would be really, really put out to do that move. And again, everything else in the summer would suffer, and other schools in the district would suffer, uh, because they'd be spending time moving, I don't know how many boxes. So, it's, it's every single person, student, moving into that fifth grade wing has got to have anywhere between five to 20 boxes of material. So, that's something to really consider, and with the fleet and personnel that we have, it would be a huge undertaking. So, that's a cost that we'd, we'd have to undertake regardless.
And once again, just to remind everybody, but in the summer is when our facilities department takes on projects that can only be done in the summer when students aren't in the schools, and we have extended time. In addition, in all our schools, our custodians, our cleaning rooms, emptying rooms, waxing the floors, the hallways, uh, the gyms, and, and really doing extensive amount of work. So, so we're, we're being limited with our staffing. So, at this point, the next phase is to move forward and then went to look at new furniture. All right? And so, in this process, I, I went to two, uh, furniture companies that, that work in the state. The first one is a school specialty, um, that do a lot throughout the area, and their quote, um, as you can see, is 184, uh, 731, and that is for student desk chairs, teacher desk chairs, office desk chairs, uh, specials, rooms, tables, chairs, also for our special ed room, ESOL room, all the interventionist, social work, so on and so forth. So, to collectively furnish that whole wing, that will be the cost. So, that is from school specialty. And they also, this is an image they sent me of a mock room that they would put together. That, so that's just an example of the work they've done and the furniture they have. I have more examples, or if there's further questions or concerns, we can look at that too. The next, uh, company that looked at is Red Thread, and that company provided a vast majority of the furniture here for, for the high school. That's, was with a renovation project, um, and their quote was 192,936. Once again, student desk chairs, teacher desk chairs, office desk chairs, special rooms, tables, chairs, and a few other items. And this is a rendering of one example of a layout of a classroom in, in, in many of the areas. Um, and, and in both, it would be trapezoid desks, chairs, different colors, want to go bright, want a teacher station where a student and a teacher could work collectively. You know, we know in our ARC program, the teacher conferences with the students, so we want that at, at a space they could do that, also multipurpose. If you, we go to the next layout here, once again, is the floor plan. This was done by Red Thread, and it gives you, you know, an aerial view of the classrooms, the offices to the right, in different layouts and options. Um, and, uh, want to point out, um, kind of in the middle, um, to the left, where the special ed classroom would, those would be also furniture, which was handicap accessible, student in a wheelchair. So, once again, looked at accommodating all of our students, different learning examples in interventionist office, uh, social workers' office, different classroom setups, and then in those specials classes, they're multipurpose depending on what those specials are. So, that gives you an overview.
They're just having a little bit of sticker shock up here, so I know that we're going to get to how it's going to be paid for, but I'm just letting you know.
Right. So, but just, it, it's a large space, you know, where it's 200 students, staff, and we have to accommodate many rooms for their needs. So, um, on the next page, we also have technology needs. Joe Torres was instrumental in helping put together this slide. Um, Joe is here too, if you have any additional questions, uh, but working with him and talking with him. And when we look at the technology needs, it's really kind of two options here. One is an all-in-one desktop, the other one is a laptop, desk, docking station, and a monitor, kind of two ways to set up the rooms. There's ethernet ports, cables, document cameras, and then smart boards, depending on what's needed. Currently, there are smart boards that are in place from W E C C, but want to make sure everything's functioning correctly. I do want to show you the picture, because I think it's an awesome picture, and that comes from a, the ninth grade classroom down the hall, that is room 1031 here at the high school. And that also shows you the layout, the furniture, the teacher's workstation, which has a desktop and a smart board. So, I, I, this is kind of what we have in place here at the high school, and, and this is a classroom that I wanted to point out.
Yeah, it's sort of like the standard now, right? Now that we've renovated this building, we can see like this is a standard classroom, what we would hope to be able to provide all of the kids. I know we're not there yet, but all the furniture matches, it's clean, it's bright, it has all the equipment it needs, so it is sort of like what we're trying to live up to in all the spaces.
Right, and then I want to point out in the reg- renovation process here in the project, uh, the state provides funding, or it's reimbursable for desktops, not for laptops. So, the goal is to move forward with a consolidated elementary school, K to four, those workstations would be desktops. So, it's just a consistent theme as we kind of look long-term in where we are. Also, working with Joe Torres, district-wide, we're also looking at how to bring forward our technology, how to upgrade and update, and, and this is just an ongoing discussion. So, there's, there's a range there, uh, depending on the needs, once we have to look at all those areas. Okay. So, that gets us to the, the next page, and Sly and I working and looking at that and looking at a cap and improvement funds. Um, we, we look at funding, um, throughout the district at all our sites from 2020 to 2024. Currently, um, there is $600,000, uh, capital improvement funds at Wyndham Middle School, and that's for renovating the existing tennis courts. Um, working with Christian Johnson, um, through the town, um, we're also talking to him, communicating with him. This is kind of a, a, a way of looking at allocating our funds based on our biggest needs and priorities at the time. And so, what, working with him is that since the allocated funds are already at Wyndham Middle School, we could repurpose that and use a portion of that to support the fifth grade coming to Wyndham School, upgrading the area, putting in the necessary furniture, getting the space ready, the technology, and all those pieces. Just to bring it up, once again, you know, this is just a way to support the needs of our students and our staff.
So, I just want to remind the board that we have actually reallocated funds, capital improvement funds before. In this particular case, it's the same site, the funds that are already exist there. We would just be moving from one project to another project in the same building. We've done it before, so it is definitely a viable option that wouldn't cost any more than it's already budgeted for.
Mary?
Yeah, um, I know there had been, um, plans to, uh, upgrade the track, soccer fields, and tennis courts, so where are those projects, um, at the middle school?
So, once again, there, there's additional, uh, capital improvement funds for those areas. Um, their currently slide was about 1.5. Do you want to talk about it?
Yeah. Little under 1.5 is in the middle school right now for capital improvement for the track, field, tennis court, and basketball court. The, the 600,000 that Albie is referring to is, I believe, allocated for, uh, the tennis court, if I'm not mistaken. The track and field is on a different line item for that capital improvement year. We have already in the past, I, I've gotten quotes for, to have everything done, tennis court, basketball court, uh, turf field versus grass field, I have all those quotes. There isn't, not enough money currently there to get that work done. There isn't not enough money currently there to get that work done. But again, working with Christian Johnson. We're able to rally up the little bits and pieces that we have from previous C I P years. Just got to go through and see what money is there that wasn't used, leftover bits and pieces of this project or that project or maybe the needs of the district have changed without getting into too many details, but I'm certain that there's more than enough money. That we can recoup the money that we're going to use for this if need be out of that.
My suggestion is that we 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 asked for a presentation on what it's going to take to do this. And there's no action item tonight. My suggestion is that we we work through this this presentation, let people ask any questions, but then push it over to the school planning and design committee to to look at that included with the question like that Mary put on the table. About all the projects, the capital improvement at the middle school. And then have school planning and design come back to the full board as soon as possible with a recommendation for us to take action. Does that make sense to folks? I don't want to short, I don't want to cut off discussion, but I don't want us to go too far down discussion without letting the committee take a look at if that if that makes sense to folks.
That's correct, as I said, without getting into too many details, I just didn't want to leave people with fear of not getting the track and 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 everything else done at the middle school.
Does that make sense to you, Brendan, as chair of school planning and design?
It does, and I I would say our next meeting is tomorrow night, so I don't know if we can pull it together in time for that, but you know, if we need to have a special meeting about committee weekend to make sure this moves forward in a timely manner.
I just want to make sure that, because I feel like the committee can look at all of the pieces and come back to us. Not that you both haven't already, but I think it will give the committee more time to digest things. Because we have a lot on our agenda tonight too, so. I don't want to cut you off, were there other things you were going to be presenting, questions?
No, just if there's any questions, happy to, Sly and I are happy to answer any questions about.
And this is great work because this is exactly what we asked, the board asked for when we started discussing this at the retreat, I think it was. Katina.
Yes, and when we have the discussion at the school planning committee, I would like to have more information or a commitment from the town about how to, that they are allocating the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we need from that capital budget. So, you know, more certainty about it.
Yeah, we can.
I'll have more details for the planning and design committee.
Any other questions, comments, Mark?
Yeah, excuse me, have we developed a plan of what to do with the furniture that we that we're not using? Are we going to do a tag sale, are we going to make it free to the public? I don't want it just to go into a dumpster and rot. It's not what we want for frontline classrooms, but you'd still usable materials, so what is our plan to dispose of that equipment?
Well, one of the things that we're also working on, because you know, we have a lot going on in the coming year. We also have the, from Wyndham Center grades one, K, one, two, three, going to North Wyndham. And that may require movement of that specific furniture for that age group. Because the fifth grade rooms, four of them are leaving North Wyndham to come to middle school. Then we also have Sweeney, so what we'd have to do is look at all of our furniture so we can best place that for the needs of the students and the schools that will be available. So out of out of Wyndham Center. If that makes sense, and then we'd have to go.
It does, except, so the equipment that's not suitable for the fifth grade and middle school may be suitable for grades at the other schools.
No, what I'm saying is that we, Sly and I already started looking or thinking about all of our furniture for all our elementary students. But I'm saying when we, we'll have to make some adjustments because fifth grade's coming out of North Wyndham. But that furniture is too big for K and one. And first, first grade and second grade, maybe even third grade, so we'll we'll have to look and review the furniture and what what is still feasible.
I just, let me interject here, I think what what you're hearing from Mark is that when it comes time, after you've figured out all the needs with all this transition that's happening, that we not just throw the furniture that we're not going to use into a dumpster someplace, that there may be some way to recycle, reuse. Let people take it, whatever, that's, I think that's what he's saying. I don't think we have to have an immediate answer tonight.
No, I just want to make sure that we have a plan for the years, for the future of that equipment.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Mark, oh, Tracy?
I just wanted to thank Sly and Alvy. Thank you, it's a lot of work and I know this is just a piece of all the different pieces you're looking at, we appreciate it.
No, absolutely.
And just, just, I just want to leave just one final thought. I know this is overwhelming for every, it's overwhelming for us as well as we walk through and and came up with all this. But just as a final thought, fifth graders going into a new building, it's a one-time cost. This would be the one-time cost that we give to this grade level and they're going to enjoy it for years to come.
Thank you.
And that would also take care of twenty-five percent of the middle school. You know what I mean, as we move forward and think about all the phases.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, appreciate it, next thing we're going to do is we have executive session. So I'm assuming we're moving into the, Tracy, are we moving into the conference room? In the main office, okay. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing the Wyndham area support personnel and the nurses contracts.
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan.
Second.
Seconded by, was that Paula?
Yes.
Any discussion? When we go into executive session, we're going to leave the room, this meeting will be suspended, this full meeting and we'll come back in when we're ready. To go on to the action items. And Grace will be, for the purposes of the motion, the the meeting, the executive session will include Tracy and Grace. Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay. We'll be back.
Back into session at 8:41. And I would start, so we're now going on to action items and number one is a motion to appoint the search committee for Wyndham's next superintendent and the actual language shared with us by the attorney is be it moved that the board establish a personnel search committee for the purpose of recommending to the board one or more candidates for the position of the superintendent of schools and moved further that the following individuals be appointed to the committee Lynn Eyde, Brendan O'Neil, Elda Rae, Mark Doyle, Katina Caban, Owen, Mary Galucci, Paula Haney, Alicia Rivera, Deianec Torres. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan, seconded by Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion on the acceptance of a donation from Thomas Hogan of a Yamaha gig maker drum kit encased to Natchog Elementary School with an approximate value of $1,500.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mark, seconded by Katina. Any further discussion except to say that's great. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion is approved. Now I'll entertain a motion to vote to approve the contract as presented to us for the Wyndham area support personnel.
So moved.
Motion made by Paula.
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Any discussion? Except to say that we really appreciate all the support personnel in this bargaining unit. They help the schools run. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. Approved. Thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion to approve the nurses contract as presented to us.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Alicia. Any further discussion except to say the same? The nurses are wonderful. We really appreciate them. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes. Now we're on to vote on a field trip for Wyndham High School to Boston, Massachusetts to visit multiple
Back into session at 8:41. And I would start, so we're now going on to action items and number one is a motion to appoint the search committee for Wyndham's next superintendent. And the actual language shared with us by the attorney is, be it moved that the board establish a personnel search committee for the purpose of recommending to the board one or more candidates for the position of the superintendent of schools and moved further that the following individuals be appointed to the committee. Lynn Ide, Brendan O'Neal, Elda Ray, Mark Doyle, Katina Caban, Owen, Mary Galucci, Paula Haney, Alicia Rivera, Deianice Torres. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan, seconded by Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion on the acceptance of a donation from Thomas Hogan of a Yamaha, Yamaha gig maker drum kit encased to Natchog Elementary School with an approximate value of $1,500.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Katina. Any further discussion, except to say that's great. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion is approved. Now I'll entertain a motion to vote to approve the contract as presented to us for the Wyndham area support personnel.
So moved.
Motion made by Paula.
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Any discussion? Except to say that we really appreciate all the support personnel in this bargaining unit. They help the schools run. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. Approved. Thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion to approve the nurses' contract as presented to us.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Alicia. Any further discussion, except to say the same. The nurses are wonderful. We really appreciate them. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion passes. Now we're on to vote on a field trip for Wyndham High School to Boston, Massachusetts to visit multiple locations on May 23, 2025.
So moved.
Motion made by Alicia.
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Any further discussion? Hope they have nice weather. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay. Motion passes. So now we're on to action on policies for repeal. And I'd entertain a motion to repeal F1 through 9.
So moved.
Motion made by who?
Me.
Katina?
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, very controversial evening we're having here. And then I'll entertain a motion to repeal, for repeal replacement of item number one under G.
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan. Seconded by Alicia. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. We're not taking any action on budget transfers tonight, as was explained under the Finance and Audit Committee report. We're going to wait until some corrections are made on those. So then we have item I, which was to take action to approve the committee meeting dates. No, no. The board meeting and the committee meeting dates for 2025. I'd entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina. How about seconded by Mary or Paula? All those in favor, please, any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, motion passes. And then I would entertain a motion to the next item, which is, I think J, to approve, to appoint as interim assistant superintendents effective December 12, 2024, Albie Harris and Beth Brunet.
So moved.
Motion made by Alicia, seconded by Mark. Any further discussion? Mary?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm not sure I see the justification for adding to, you know, another assistant superintendent even on an interim basis. And there is precedent for giving people stipends to take on additional work on a temporary basis without a new title.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please indicate by Mark.
One question. Do we need to put something about the MOU?
Well, that would be put together by
We don't mention in the motion.
No, we don't, we don't have to.
We'll take care of it on our end.
Yeah, that would be taken care of with the unions and the staff. That's why I said in the motion that it would be effective December 12, so that it would be starting the day Tracy, the day after Tracy leaves and they would have time to put all that stuff in place. Okay? So any further discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed. One, one opposed, the rest in support. So thank you, Beth and Albie, for taking on that role along with support of Neil as we move into interim after Tracy leaves. And anything else? Oh, any public comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:49 PM.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.